I get a motion that we discuss only those four items that we went into closed session. One, uh, two items under Virginia Code 2.2-3711A1, discussion of personnel matter and appointments. Um, one item under Virginia Code 2.2-3711A5, discussion of prospective business or industry with no previous announcements to make. And one item under Virginia Code 2.2-3711A1, discussion, um, investment of public to, public funds where, um, competition is involved.
Seven, thirty.
And may I give a roll call for that, please?
Mr. Penn.
Yes.
Mr. Rossing.
Aye.
Mr. Eas.
Aye.
Mr. Rattler.
Aye.
Mr. Paul.
Aye.
Mr. Reese.
Aye.
Okay, and then we have a modification of public section. The Resolution 2022-06, a resolution appointing several representatives of the boards to add that.
I have a motion to add Resolution 2021-06 to the agenda.
And then I give a roll call for that.
Mr. Penn.
Yes.
Mr. Rossing.
Aye.
Mr. Eas.
Aye.
Mr. Rattler.
Aye.
Mr. Paul.
Aye.
Mr. Reese.
Aye.
We'll start with presentations. Um, we have a presentation from PSA, Mr. Sitliff, and Ms. Burchett, and Jared Linkus.
So, Jared Linkus, PSA Director, County Engineer, um, with me, uh, as emergent, he's our Vice Chair for PSA Board, and Mr. Sutcliffe. Had an unexpected emergency come up, and I said, send us apologies for not being able to attend, but, um, it was, you know, when they were, when they were here. But I'd like to start off by saying, um, Mr. Mayor, Councilman, Mr. Burchett, thank you for your time, really appreciate the opportunity to come for you and to, uh, discuss this matter with you. And, um, we've expressed our, our concerns of, of the building services contract. Um, you know, I think the primary thing that I would, you know, like to see, to do a takeaway is just, you know, just really expressing of PSA's, um, good desire to please reconsider the, um, cancellation of the building services contract. We do have some concerns of moving forward, the impacts that that may have down the line for both us and, you know, the panel and the town's citizens. We've had some past experience at the PSA of doing the building services ourselves within the panel. And contract came about as a result of some of those experiences. And, um, probably the easiest way for me to, to kind of express those, those experiences is maybe give, uh, Ms. Burchett an opportunity to, um, to kind of give the history. Ms. Burchett has worked for the county at the time that the, um, building services contract was put into place, and she was instrumental in, in bringing that, that contract to fruition as a result of, of some of the concerns and the things that were happening at that time. So, just, just kind of like, and I'll, and I'll take, I'll take Ms. Burchett's, then I'm just giving the things that myself, the board, if you have time, if you don't mind us doing that. But this time, I'll hand over to Ms. Burchett, this time, I'll approach her for a little bit of the history of how the contract came to be.
Okay, as Jared has said, my name is Nancy Burchett, and I currently serve on the PSA Board of Directors, I serve as Vice Chair. Uh, first, I also would like to thank you for the opportunity for you to, and speak to you on this matter. Uh, we appreciate that very much. Uh, now, several of you know, I did work for the town for about thirty, forty years in full-time capacity. And then after I retired, I went back and worked for another eight or seven years in part-time capacity. And during these years, I served in various positions, and one of, I was one of the staff members that served on the committee that worked on this two thousand, uh, building agreement or contract, uh, with the town. So, I feel like I'm pretty familiar, uh, about what was going on. So therefore, what I'd like to do is I'll, I'll just give you a little background on what happened, and then come go over the advantages of the agreement to the town and what the PSA, their advantages were. Um, from the town first, uh, town officials prior to the building agreement, uh, had been looking for ways to reduce expenditures, and, uh, they were seeking out additional revenue sources. And they approached county officials on possible ways that, uh, intergovernmental, uh, services might be achieved, and thereby saving some money. Um, a committee was formed with representatives from both the town and the county. The town treasurer and the county treasurer also served on that committee, as well as a few other town, um, staff folks and county staff, um, folks. Um, and the town mayor, he also attended and participated in meeting meetings that we had related to the matter. Um, after a number of months, um, as much discussion and, and a number of meetings, a proposal for the town to bill and collect the PSA, uh, garbage bills from the town residential garbage customers that agreed to and implemented in September of two thousand. Now, under this agreement, the town receives a minimum of thirty thousand dollars per year, or five percent of the total PSA collections. Um, now, this, whichever is greater, under thirty, um, this actually resulted in a new revenue for the town with no additional or added expenditure, because at that time, there was no staff added, um, so there should not have been additional expenditures. Also, the PSA agreed to reimburse the town for all initial expenditures to implement the bill, which included programming, computer programming, charging software, supplies, um, consultation, the temporary personnel cost, and the employee, uh, overtime that, um, was incurred. Now, last year, I believe, the town received from the PSA, uh, about thirty-eight thousand dollars. Now, for this year, FY twenty-two, PSA budget projections estimate that this amount will be around thirty-two thousand. Um, now, in addition, and here again, we're continuing to talk about the town, prior to the billing, there had been some complaints from town customers about receiving two bills. The call, for the utility services, they were receiving one monthly bill from the town for the water and garbage. And then they were receiving one quarterly bill from PSA for, excuse me, the town was billing monthly for water and sewer, and then the PSA was billing quarterly for garbage service. So with this new agreement, it made it more convenient and a little less confusing for town utility customers to pay just the one deal to the town in Palas. So, the town received, in kind of, uh, summary, the town received an additional revenue source of funds, and again, and which was guaranteed in the annual amount. All upfront costs were, were paid by the PSA, and the town pa, taxpayers could now conveniently pay for combined services with one check at one location. Now, what we're going to talk about now relates to PSA. Prior to the billing agreement with the town, PSA staff were struggling with the billing and the collecting of garbage service for town customers. Problems were being encountered with town customers not notifying the PSA billing office when they moved, or even knowing the PSA billing office, or not being advised when a new customer needed to be billed, because the new customers were not completing the PSA service agreement on. Further, PSA delinquencies for town customers experienced continual non-payments from the quarterly, from quarterly buildings to the next. Even though delinquent letters were being sent, liens were being taken if the property was owned or home owner, and all other possible liens, um, were being taken to collect these delinquent payments. However, for the customers with no written PSA service agreement, there, and there were any given, legal action was not possible according to the legal advice that we were getting at that time from the county attorney. Um, accountability was needed to ensure that every house owner in the town was being billed for the garbage service, because the garbage was being picked up regardless. Also, a more effective mechanism for collecting delinquent town residential garbage accounts was needed. So, under this agreement, the advantages to the PSA for the residential garbage amount, this agreement saw the issue of accountability, because it ensured that all customers would be billed. And it also provided an effective method of collecting delinquent accounts with the cutoff of water service by the town for non-payment of the bill. And further, PSA had some savings in mailing costs, since they would no longer be mailing out quarterly garbage bills to town residential customers. So at the time that this agreement was approved and agreed to, it was considered to be a winning situation for the area. So that's kind of a little bit of a history that I, I would also just like to, um, say just a couple of other things. Prior to receiving Mrs. Burchett's letter to Mr. Linkus, uh, old by a mother, so about advising the town council, we're terminating the two thousand billing agreement effective June first, the PSA Board, nor the PSA staff members, to the best of our knowledge, were aware of any of the issues that were in the letter. So we would very much like to give them an opportunity to address those and hopefully resolve these issues. Um, in closing, I would just want to thank you for listening, and on behalf of PSA Board of Directors, we respectfully request that you reconsider the previous decision to terminate this staff agreement. And I'll kind of back out of the jacket this time.
So, as I talked earlier about some of the lessons that we learned from that time, and one of the, one of the struggles that we had was the collection, um, paints. There was some disconnect between that extra bills, and that created confusion, and folks, you know, it was getting quarterly, and, you know, you get confused about getting paid your utility bill, how they kind of see it as a utility bill versus water sewer versus garbage, and that sort of thing. So it really, um, caused a spike in the, the collection of this. And, um, one of the, one of the pieces to that is by adding this to the bill, it allowed for the collect at the same time as water costs. So, you know, for non-payment, as the bill came in, it gets distributed across water sewer, garbage, it leaves the remaining balance, they don't pay the full amount, it leaves that remaining balance across the board, a little bit on each one, which allowed for the, the water costs. Based on, based on our research and interpretation of codes, is that it's still allowed as long as it is, um, the collection efforts, there's a contract in place for the locality in which you're receiving services from an authority, that it, they're allowed to still do that as long as there's an agreement in place and contract in place to be able to bill and collect on, on behalf of those billing services. So that's, that really is a key piece to how that collection effort is, is improved through the current process. And, and part of the reason being for that is when you start looking at our collection options, one of the strongest options is, I'm sure you're a little aware of, is you've had the same, same issues, if you replace liens from the property once the non-payment goes on for a period of time. The struggles that we had with that were when we had rental properties. And current codes allow us to go a maximum of ninety days as long as the property owner has signed an agreement upfront. So, as Ms. Burchett referenced before, the, having that signed agreement with us in place is critical for our collection efforts, but also having the property owner acknowledge that agreement as well to allow us that ninety days. For rental properties, once it goes beyond that ninety days, we lose any collection efforts. So, when we look at the, the breakdown, um, within county and panel, the county currently has about seventy-eight percent homeowners, a point three percent rental, and most of our rentals are centered around the population centers, where we already provide water, so we, we can do those cutoffs. We have very low percentage of folks out in the rural, rural areas of the county where we have just the refuse collection services alone that are rental property. So it's a very small percentage of our current customer base where we're limited by that ninety-day wall. When we look at the town breakdown for rental versus owner, the town's about fifty-eight percent owner versus about forty-two percent rental. And so, even assuming that we have same collection percentages across the board, whether it's rental or owner, and there's no difference in rental versus owner, that higher percentage of rental properties leads to a higher percentage that we own to get that ninety-day effort. And so, I think, you know, that same experience that we had before of seeing a large percentage of the customers that bill and collected, I think we still have some real, real concerns with those percentages as we see now. Which means we didn't have no other mechanism to collect our liens, anything like that on the property owner, they're just, they're just due for those ninety days. So really, at that point, the only option for the PSA to protect themselves from those losses is to stop service to that particular location. As we currently, under our current program, with the collection coming from the town and the ability to cut off water service, we, you know, collection efforts are ninety-eight, ninety-nine percent, you know, it's a really high percentage of collection efforts. So right now, the current PSA policy is, if you bring something to the curb in the alleyway, wherever that may be, we're going to pick it up. If it comes out in a, in a bag, if it comes out, you know, you get technically our, our, our contractors for two cans. Folks bring out that amount, if they bring it out, set it out in a box, we pick it up. So as, as we collect that coming through, we're picking that up and knowing that we're going to receive that essentially what's the nineteen dollars, what's the five percent stake on. Moving forward, we start seeing larger percentages of that, we're going to have to invest or take, take measures to understand who's paying, who's not. What you typically see in, it's kind of an industry standard, as you've probably seen with something like a waste management or something like that, they issue cans. You know, if you go into other communities where cans are issued, typically what you see is you get one can, um, for a set rate, and you get extra cans if you come in and pay additional for that. What we see generally in the area from private contractors is that first can is around twenty-three dollars, and then, you know, it can be anywhere twelve to fifteen dollars for getting that additional extra can. So, if you look at what the current rate of twenty dollars to the panel versus, um, what those rates would be to try to invest in something like that, you can see that, that expense drops up the cost for, for residents. The, then those cans, what they allow is for a tracking mechanism, and essentially they have that, that code on, and when the can is picked up, it's scanned, and we know that they're, that they're paying the bill. It's essentially treated as a water meter, where the utility provider would be, um, own, would be the owner of that particular item, just like you're the owner of a water meter, that allows you to take that item back when there's no payment paid for that service. And so it becomes a mechanism for the folks that are on back and truck, to be able to recognize whether the bill's being paid or not, and that's their way to know whether they pick it up or not. The, the problem we have with that is that initial investment we're purchasing of those cans. You know, you're talking about several hundred thousand dollars, it could be three, four hundred thousand dollars to purchase, purchasing our cans that we need to acquire. That type of initial investment to be able to implement a program of that nature, the, with the rates that we currently have, there, there's just not enough, uh, revenue being generated to cover that type of investment, to get a return on investment before the cans are no longer usable. You know, it, it may be a ten, fifteen-year return on investment with a can, it may last five years. It, it, so it's just, that venture just becomes, um, just doesn't pay for itself, to try to make that type of investment. But right now, you know, people, you know, they're, we're bringing out fifty-five gallon drums, or whatever they may use, product cans, um, and, you know, we're, we're picking that up. And as I go down through, um, when I say that, you know, I don't say that just as a, um, just, just to kind of make a statement, as I go back through and look at our budget. Our current budget, the way we budget for residential refus, we have revenue that gets generated from our customers, and we also break out the residential revenue that's generated from town customers. And we add those two components of revenue together, and then the expenditures we have, we break out our residential refuse apartment separately from our commercial and industrial side. And then we also pay for the operation of our convenience centers out of the residential revenues for residential revenues. Because as you go, as you go into those convenience centers, there's no charge, the residents, as they go into that, and it's limited to residential consultants and no commercial units. So, it, the way we look at the budget for that is that it's paid for out of our residential revenues. When we look currently at our current FY twenty-two budget, um, we've had a revenue of over two and a half million dollars, and expenditures are just under two and a half million dollars. So we have about a two, over two and a half percent difference between our projected, between our revenues and our expenditures, where we will basically just revenue in that. When we look at what we're year-to-date projected through the last six months, we're actually looking at a loss for the year. We think we've seen during the, um, last two years, with folks being home, we've seen a spike in the residential side. We've seen a spike at the convenience centers. This year alone, we budgeted around three hundred thousand dollars for the convenience centers, and we're projecting out at the end almost four hundred and thirty thousand dollars. So then, we're going to see a significant loss on the residential side this year. If we go in and break out the town component to that, and we remove any revenues from the town, and we look at the percentage of customer breakdown, it's about sixty-seven percent of our customer base, our county residents versus, um, the remainder being the town customers. And whether we look at that either in customer numbers or revenue generated, it's pretty much the same, um, sixty-seven, thirty-three breakdown. And we apply to that the expenditure cost for our residential apartment, which includes our disposal fees at the landfill, and the operation of the convenience centers, we basically come back out to the same numbers, to where if we look at it from a budgeted standpoint, it's about a three point seven percent gain, so we're actually a little bit better when we remove the town numbers. In the budget under projected, it's about a four and a half percent loss, where it was a eleven percent loss. So, about either way, we're running, whether we, whether we pick up the town's customers or not, from our budget and from our projected, it's pretty much the same thing for us. We're, our margin in town for what we, what we make to pick up on the, on it is very low. It, you know, and that's how we maintain a rate of twenty dollars, when around us, folks are charging much more than that. So again, you know, as I said, the return, with that type of margin, the return on investment from that, making some sort of, um, investment in cans or anything like that, it should not pay. And so what that leads to is, in order to make that type of investment, to be able to pick up versus not pick up and know who's paying and who's not, rates are going to go up. And when the rates go up, the, the service is actually going to go down, because you're going to see folks that are bringing stuff out to the curb that's just not getting picked up. And, you know, my concern is that you're going to see, um, more trash in the streets, people are paying more, they're seeing more in the streets, the neighbors are getting upset, and they're going to call in to the county staff with the code compliance and those sort of things, making complaints that the curb isn't getting picked up. And I think you're going to see that whether we continue with the service or whether a protocol comes in and does that service either way, because they're going to, they're going to address it that same way. They're going to issue cans, and they're going to pay for the service, if you don't pay, we'll get it picked up. And, you know, so, yeah, I think at the end of the day, again, as I, as I said initially, kind of in closing, our request is to please, please reconsider the termination of the contract of building services. We feel like, at the end of the day, it is going to be, um, there are going to be negative impacts to the PSA, there are going to be negative impacts to the town customers through the rate increases and reduced service, and we feel like there's going to be negative impacts towards the town staff in receiving the complaints for the folks that aren't getting the services, that aren't, aren't being picked up from non-payment. And we just feel like, you know, and in addition to that, there's, as Ms. Burchett referenced earlier, that currently the staffing of the town is receiving on average about a forty thousand dollar thirty-eight last year, projected to be forty-two this year benefit for having that building services contract. So, it, it just really feels like a lose-lose for everybody involved. And we just really, we're just, actually again, just please, please reconsider the termination of that contract. Any questions? I'll be happy to entertain any of that.
I just, I just have one question, so that I just, I understand, clarification, the residential side is two and a half million in and out, basically, as we look at it, two and a half percent differential.
Very similar.
Um, how about the commercial side, as it pertains to Palas? So if you were to add in the commercial side, maybe that's.
I could pull, I don't have to with me tonight, um, because right now, you know, as we're looking at the building services contract from a commercial side, we still handle commercial accounts right now on our own. I could provide those numbers anytime if you like, but it's very similar, um, we, we're a public agency, you know how that is. We, we don't answer to investors, we're not in the business to make money. Our budgets each year, across the board, whether it's water, sewer, or garbage, um, we're, our budgets are projected just above break-even.
I have one more question. You said that there's a contract that people fill out with the PSA when they start. Um, I mean, now, I don't know about anybody else, but I don't remember there being, I mean, I actually remember seeing a bill, my first water bill, when I bought my house seven years ago or so, and I saw garbage disposal on it, and I actually thought it was for like the insect disposal, because, and I actually didn't even know that it was for the PSA until I got on the board. So, how do you communicate with people? I mean, I understand in county, if you're, got your own setback and, and well, I assume you have to go down there and, and sign up, right? It's not a contract. And so, is that, does it not get translated over to the town? Because I, because like I said, I don't, I didn't even know, I would pay that bill for four years because I've known what it was for.
So that's actually a great question, because that is, that is the seamless nature of the way that it's currently been done. When you sign up for water and sewer services with the town, there's basically a box that gets checked that says, you're also a garbage customer. So you don't have to have a contract with us. If we go the direction that's being proposed, then your, your contract, when you come in and sign up for water and sewer services with the panel, you'd have an agreement and a contract with the panel for that service, then you would also have to have a separate contractor service with the PSA, which would require you then to either come to the county offices, or go to the PSA billing office in Dublin, to sign a separate contract to get your refuse collection. And that's one of the major concerns that we have, is getting folks in the door to either come to the county offices or go to Dublin to sign up for that second contract. And if they don't sign up for that, we have no mechanism to be able to file liens, get their renters, and they don't get their landlord to sign up for that, we have no mechanism to collect on them, even in that ninety-day window. So that's one of the big concerns that we have, is, you know, given, given the way it's currently laid out, exactly as you said, you guys have your own.
My concern is more that if I don't have a contractual relationship with the PSA, then I'm concerned that the town can't shut off my water, resident water. It's the bill that the town is collecting that, that the person who's owed hasn't actually signed up for. I mean, I remember signing the, the form for the water and the sewer, and I had to bring in my, my, um, I had to bring in my deed, I think, to show that I actually lived at, owned a house. Because if I did, the town would make me pay a two hundred and fifty dollar, uh, deposit for water and sewer. And, but I don't remember anything on there about garbage. And so, I mean, that's, just from a purely, like, legal standpoint, I'm concerned about that.
So, based on, based on our research and our interpretation of codes, and obviously you've got your, your legal counsel to provide you with whatever opinions they may have, but, um, what, what our interpretation of that code is, that you have a, we have a contract with the locality, the local government unit, or the government unit, um, to provide that service. Then we also have a contract with the government unit. Then we also have a contract with the government unit to provide billing services. And so that, that contract, the, so we're allowed to form under Virginia Water and Waste Authorities Act. Is what allows the PSA to form separate of board supervisors or county councilors or something like that. In the code sections, we're allowed to contract with any government unit, whether it's federal, state, local, you know, whatever that might be, to provide services. And within that, the, the billing and the enforcement, and I think key piece is billing and enforcement of the collection of those allowed to be handled by either party, whether it's the government unit or the authority. So that's where we, and so the enforcement actions, when you start chasing down through the code sections on enforcement actions, cut off of water for non-payment is one of those things. So when, when folks come in and they make payment for their utility bill that includes water, sewer, garbage, it gets distributed proportionally across.
I see the argument, I just don't think it, I don't agree with it. I've read, I haven't read the particular code section, I don't, I don't, I think you need to have, in order to cut somebody off, they actually have to pay. And we agreed that, I mean, as far as I know, maybe somebody feels differently, but once, I agreed to pay the town for my water and sewer, but I didn't agree to pay the town for my, I mean, maybe I'm missing something. But I don't remember that form having anything about garbage on there. Because that's why when I looked at that bill and I saw garbage disposal, I thought it was, you know, my in-sink thing, that added more gunk to the sewer. So I was not thoughtful what I am about something, but, all right.
So you guys currently, I would say, I think you said the town's thirty-three percent or something like that. So the other sixty-seven percent you guys are handling the billing for that, right?
Yes.
You all, it's already a normal practice of what you already do. And so billing the other thirty-three percent wouldn't be, wouldn't be a change in what you guys do currently. The only issue is the loss of accountability to billing, where folks, you're already doing that for the higher-risk of the town, right?
So the, the difference would be, it would be an additional, just looking at your, your numbers, you're running right at thirty-eight hundred customers. So that would be another thirty-eight hundred bills we'd send out. You know, as Ms. Burge referenced, we used to do that, I guess, prior to the two thousand contract, we did that on a quarterly basis. So if you, which is similar to what we do in county, if you are a county resident that doesn't have water and sewer services provided by the county, you get a quarterly statement for your garbage bill. The challenge we have with that is referencing earlier, the percentages we have with rental and that ninety-day window, we almost have to do monthly billing. Because we get one bill out the door, but by the time we get the second bill out three months later, so we've got six months of services we can only collect on three months. So that's the challenge that we have.
But those are challenges you guys already currently deal with for whatever percentage of that other.
Yes, it's a very small percentage, yeah, I mean, it's from a, I mean, because it is with the percentage that we can't collect on the ninety-day window. You know, we, the county has laid out at about seventy-eight percent owner versus twenty-two percent rental. And then even within that seventy-eight percent, or that twenty-two percent, the, their steel center pretty much around the population center is where we have water service available. So it's a very small percentage of folks that are renting out in the community that do not have.
Where's that forty-two percent number coming from?
That's all from census data, I mean, it's, it's.
But that, so that includes like carriage bill and stuff like that where they get commercials picked up?
So it, I mean, that would be a part of it. And so, and it's handled differently within the town, so carriage bill is an example of one where they have dumpsters.
So some of that forty-two percent is not actually going to be, aren't, wouldn't be customers anyways, because they're not, those individual units wouldn't be part of that whole, right?
So the individual units there, the way that, so typically the way the PSA handles dumpster service. There's two charges that apply to dumpster service. You have the monthly rental of the containers, which is fairly minimal, it's fifteen dollars a month or something for the rental. What we get on a rental is per month. Then there's the haul. So every time we touch that container and dump it to haul it out, that is, there's a fee for that too. And I'm, sorry, I brought it off my head, but it's around, I think it's thirty-two, thirty-five, something in that nature. And we typically are hitting those once to twice a week.
But you're not, you're not having, you don't want to extend one bill to one individual.
So right now, what happens different ways in different places. So carriage bill is the example you used. Carriage bill, the residents pay a monthly residential fee. There are dumpsters on site that the property owner rents the dumpster from us, but we don't charge him a haul fee. Because the residents are paying the monthly fee for the garbage service. So really, he's just paying, and I guess, you know, he so chose to buy his containers, he wouldn't have to rent them all to us. So that, in his particular scenario.
But so all of those could be converted into group billing and the landlord landlords handle that.
If the, if the, if the property owner chose to do that, and so what you're running into there is we have property owners who don't want to include it in the rental charge. So they want the renters to pay separately from, and then we have some places where the, the property owner includes water, sewer, garbage service as part of the rent. And we just contract directly, and that's, those are easy ones. You know, we set them in a container, every time we tip it, every time we haul it, and we don't have individual connections with, with the rental property. So those are the easy ones, those are, there's a lot fewer of those, there's only.
They're very communicative, that both owners grouped over a certain side of it, or they did contract a private entity.
You know, that could, could be an option, you know, I mean, right now, we try to just do whatever they want. You know, that's the, we try to find the services however the property owner wants it. And then we do have some rental units too, I was actually at one today, Deerfield, I think. Where they actually, they don't have containers, dumpsters, and they bring out their cans or whatever they have right to the street. That's kind of how I'm part of the unit. So we come through those and instead of having a dumpster to go pick, we pick up cans for every resident that's in there. So it, it is kind of been on property owners to do, and that's, that's kind of the way we've been treating that.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Resolution twenty-two twenty-two that goes six, resolution appointing several representatives to board with twenty-two.
Good, Aaron, I'm going to approve resolution twenty-two twenty-two that goes fifth, appointing the individuals listed to the board.
So. May I have a roll call for that, please?
Excuse me, Mr. Penn?
Yes.
Mr. Dawson?
Aye.
Mr. Hayes?
Aye.
Mr. Radcliffe?
Aye.
Mr. Clark?
Aye.
Mr. Reese?
Aye.
All right.
Now, next is the consent agenda we will look over, February third, twenty twenty-two council meeting. May I send one of the negotiations, should I accept those, please?
I'm going to approve that word, uh, twenty twenty-two council meeting, Mr. Adam.
Can you roll call for that, please?
Mr. Penn?
Yes.
Mr. Dawson?
Aye.
Mr. Hayes?
Aye.
Mr. Radcliffe?
Aye.
Mr. Clark?
Aye.
Mr. Hayes?
Aye.
The board's chair, council comments, Mr. Penn, do you have any comments?
Thank you, just move on.
Mr. Duff? Mr. Reese?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Radcliffe?
I'm good, you guys, thank you.
Mr. Clark? Mr. Reese? Well, I'm not going to break that, are you going to break it tonight?
I am.
Okay, well, then we'll move on to the manager's.
I'm not going to follow suit. Um, I thought what I would do this evening is give the council an update on a number of initiatives that we have underway as it relates to the use of the American Recovery Act monies, because some of those are things that will be visible to you all over the next several months. First of all, I want to mention that we will soon have on the interstate signage, both in the north and south directions, that will advise people of the existence of historic downtown. You all are probably familiar with those brown signs that you see throughout the interstate. And many people enjoy going to historic downtowns. And we think that's another way to bring people into our community on a first-time basis to see what we have. There is an expense to that installation. And because we're able to get it on both the north and south bounds, it's a little bit newer, but we think that's important to us. And again, no town dollars involved, except for the staff time that we have been involved in working on this. But we expect to see those over the next several months. And hopefully we'll see people come into our community for the first time. And of course, as you come in, we also have in the last year or so put some additional signs directional, let's say what kind of activities or venues are available. So we're really excited about the possibility there. I know the council has seen and heard about the skate park. We have ordered all of the ramps, expect those to be in this spring. And they will be installed by the company that we're actually purchasing those from, which is also the company that did the design for us. And you'll recall that we did have some opportunities for public input on the design. So that would meet the needs and interests of our citizens. And as soon as that particular one is done, we will be removing the very old and derelict one that's out at McGill. But we have also in conjunction with that order of fencing that will be around the basketball court. Lighting that we think is critical. And have just today engaged an individual to do the markings on the basketball court and have ordered the basketball goals. So hopefully in the next several months, we'll see a lot of that. I'm learning about pickleball, which I had not heard of until recently. But we have obtained an estimate for resurfacing and marking the tennis courts at the Sixth Street block for pickleball. And so that again, should be happening very, very shortly. We have, I think several months ago, we shared with you also plans for a mountain bike park right off of the intersection of the interstate and On the Nine. We had those final plans and have got a cost estimate and hope to be doing some installation on that. We looked at the idea of doing it in phases and it really appeared that it was advantageous to us to go ahead and do it all. Since so much of the first phase really had to be in place for anything that would prove in the future. I think the council was well aware of the fact that with all of these different outdoor activities, we are recruiting for an outdoor facilities coordinator that will be managing, overseeing the installation of a lot of these activities as well as working on the idea of making Redwood Mountain a more active place for bikers, walkers, and mountain bikes. But the most interesting and probably the thing that will appeal to our citizens the most has been our decision to replace all of the playgrounds in the town. And I do have some slides that I want to show you. We are putting these projects out for bid. This particular first one has already been purchased and will be installed in the next thirty to forty-five days. It is a replacement of the playground at Gatewood. In this instance, the vendor for Gatewood provided seventy-five hundred dollars toward the cost and did the removal of the old equipment. Your newer playgrounds not only have safety features in their construction, but they also require a significant amount of mulching around them as well as a border that contains that mulch, but also delineates the particular area. And so all, with all of these, including this one, we are getting them installed professionally and having those features also placed so that the mulching and the bordering and everything is being done. We want to make sure that not only we buy something that's durable, but that we maintain the safety features. And in fact, just had earlier this week, representative of our insurance company who is an expert on playground safety, go with several staff members to each of the playground areas, do measurement to make sure that they were fit within the area and to give us some information on what features are at some of these playgrounds that we could retain in addition to putting new items in. And so we'll go and show you now some that we will be writing up the specs for. This is not necessarily the one that we will purchase from this particular vendor, but we had a committee that actually looked at these areas to determine what they thought was in the best interest of that particular part of our community. This happens to be one that's in Amherst, Virginia. But I think if the slide goes up, you'll see that it would be slated for. No, didn't it indicate which playground it would be at? On the slide? Should have, I'm sorry. It's not on there, okay, we'll go to the next one. This is a, you'll see a front and then a back view of this particular area. And of course, it's a smaller because of the area, the particular playground doesn't have as much area to it. This one also is, each one of these have a different load. And one of the things that I'm interested in promoting with these various playgrounds is people traveling around the community and not just staying in their own community to enjoy outdoor recreation. In fact, something that we don't have a picture of yet, that we are looking at for next year with the additional ARCA money is creating a water feature at Cool Springs. So again, we'll put different things in different areas that almost forces people, if they want to be involved, to move around the town and not just stay in their one little community. Because we want to build community pride and interest and not just continue to have people kind of isolated and staying in their own neighborhood. I'm going to go to the next one. This is the backside of that one that you just saw. All very challenging, but we think they're safe and they will make a big difference as there is more and more emphasis, particularly because of the pandemic, of people being in the outdoors, enjoying the outdoors. So these are all things that will be coming over the next six months. And hopefully will be seen as a major benefit to the community. Would also mention to you that the ARCA money is giving us the opportunity with the most recent guidelines to go in and do some paving in neighborhoods where the roads do not meet state standards. Therefore, we've not been getting or receiving any state funding. Those roads are patched a lot, but not necessarily repaved. And we're in the process, as I speak, of identifying all of those and we want to do paving of those neighborhood roads over the next year. We have met with the paver and are beginning to get estimates on that. So you're going to be seeing a lot of activity going on throughout the town. And I hope that the citizens both appreciate it and understand that this is another way that we're trying to take advantage of the federal monies that are coming. You all are aware of the fact that a significant amount of the first year's money is being spent on infrastructure generally, a lot of it with our water system. We started the painting of all of our water tanks. The most difficult one we chose to do first and we found out when it was kind of scrubbed that it was like a piece of Swiss cheese that we're actually going to end up replacing the tank. And these are tanks that have not been painted in thirty-plus years. So we really have taken seriously this one-time opportunity for the town to really take advantage of these funds and do things that we would not have been able to do otherwise, as opposed to trying to supplant things that are a normal part of our routine. We're not using the ARCA money at all for our day-to-day activities, but really looking at how can we position the town to be the very best in the future with these kinds of investments. with these kinds of investments.
Ms. Burge, I want to ask you a question on only the park door highway, I think, come from this problem. Is this including maybe some lighting in the door highway for the train station?
We have not talked about lighting at the particular playgrounds. We are doing some security features at the train station, which of course is in very close proximity. But if you all think that lighting is an issue, I'm happy to look at that. We did think there was lighting that was going to be needed at the skate park, basketball area.
It's more important because, I think, if we have a lot of elderly people that actually go late in the evening and walk that park, as you know, we have trouble with, I say small walk stuff. Which brings me to this, the grass. We, maybe start on the end, but that creek...
Somebody told me to find a solution so that you couldn't burn that up again.
Cut that grass. But the creek, we're going to have to really do something with the creek. We can put all this money in this park and get it to sit, start, because I don't wish to do about it. But that creek bed needs to be cut back, cut down, cleaned down. I'm sorry about frogs and all that stuff. It's...
It's more about the flooding. It's more about the fact that it holds back the water so that it doesn't ruin the creek beds, and then we have flooding, we have this brand new playground equipment that gets washed away.
Well, we can certainly invite representatives of the Pete Creek organization to come talk with you. They have, since the concern was expressed some months ago by the council regarding that, they have taken significant steps to, my word, call that plantings to make sure that what is there is something that should be preserved and integral to retaining the creek, as opposed to having some things there that really just come up.
You don't have to cut it down. If you just go in and figure out a way to pop it, and squirt it, it's, right now, it's poisoning up and everything else. I mean, I was on French Pete Creeks, and I know what there is, but it's got to be an end of this thing. But anyway...
Well, we also, and I can't do the, all the details at this point, but we did have completed about a year or year and a half ago now, a study of Pete Creek by the Army Corps of Engineers. That study has made it possible for the town in the future to apply for federal funding for some improvements for Pete Creek. Our two congressmen, Pan and Warner, very recently wrote the head of the agency requesting funding for the town and for Pete Creek. And we'll have to follow that up with an application, but it represents a real opportunity for us to get big bucks from the federal government to work on some long-term improvements. And Pete Creek is clearly important, not just to the town, but to the county. We spoke about that earlier today with some representatives of the county, and it's something that we will clearly work on. I will tell you that the faith is very full right now with all the different projects that we're trying to get underway using this ARCA money in addition to the daily work that we're doing. And we have some new ideas about housing options for the town that we'll be bringing to you all in the future that will also require some resources. But I think the time for this community to really excel is here, and we have to take advantage of that. I talk to the staff all the time about the window of opportunity being open, that we need to get as much through that window as possible, as soon as possible, so that we're ready for whatever comes our way. But again, I just want to say, your staff is working exceedingly hard and making all these things happen, and you as a council have been most supportive of that work. And we will continue to do our very best on behalf of you all and the citizens of the town.
So, you listed some very important items. Is there any way we could get something on our website? A link to what's happening in Pulaski, or whatever you might call it, and then just so it's obvious to anyone who clicks on our page?
We could do that on Facebook as well.
Yeah, and then step through, I mean, because, you know, even though the playground, you know, drawings, whatever, may change a little bit, it'd be nice to have the community know that all of these things are in the works, returning. Same thing with skate park. I mean, it's a lot, it's a lot of activity, and it's a lot to keep up with.
And we have some very good economic development opportunities that are coming our way as well. And when we're in a position to talk about those publicly, we'll certainly share that. But I would say, I think the timing is right, and we just need to take advantage of that time and do as quickly as we can. That's all we have, I need up the last one.
With that, just a reminder that our next council meeting will be March first, twenty-twenty-two. Council meeting session, co-session thirty-five, public session six-thirty. And as I have nothing else on the agenda, I call this meeting adjourned.